And the Shakopee School Board, would you all please rise for the pledge? Okay, thank you and welcome everybody tonight to the Scott County Board of Commissioners and Shakopee School Board meeting again for October 23rd, 2023. Let's go around the room and do introductions here and what I'm going to do is I'm going to start right over here to my left Wesley Vermillion, our administrator.
Wesley Vermillion, the county administrator.
Chad Johnson, newly elected to school board last November.
I'm Joe Aldrich, I've been the treasurer since I was elected in 2018.
Michelle, the ex-officio, official student member or student board member, new this year.
Clark Whacklin Brackey, Scott County Commissioner.
Ibrahim Mohammed, from Shakopee Schools, from Shakopee School Board.
Kristy Peterson, Shakopee School Board Chair, I've been on the school board since I was elected in 2018 as well.
Tom Ove, Scott County Board Chair.
I'm Jeff Smith, school board member since I was elected in 2020.
Jody Brennan, Scott County Commissioner.
I think it's a province that pay, ex-officio member appointed last year.
John Ulrich, Scott County Commissioner.
Carolyn Valdez, am with the school board and I was elected this year, but I've been serving since April 2022.
Mike Redmond, Superintendent, Shakopee Public Schools.
Okay, thank you, and do we want to do the audience? Or not? Okay, that's fine. I do see, I do see City Council Jesse Warr is here tonight, so thank you for coming tonight. I also see our county attorney is here. I missed anybody else, great, so, thank you. With that, we're gonna, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented for our Scott County Board.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Pose? Okay, we are open as a board.
And I would look for a motion to consider the joint agenda for Shakopee Public Schools as presented.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Aldrich and a second by Smith, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose? Garry's.
Okay, we're gonna go to Saber Pride and talk about the camper cabins. And who's gonna?
I guess I'm doing the introduction, get out of the way.
Redmond, yes. Mike Redmond on behalf of Shakopee Public Schools, gonna introduce Mr. Brett Coughfield, who is an outstanding teacher, who has worked with our students on the Camper Cabin Project. I know many of us are familiar with it, and I'm gonna let the experts do all the talking, but please, please give them a round of applause.
Thank you, Dr. Redmond, members of the boards, thank you for having us here. I've got three students with me today, I've got Leo, Carter, and Kale, these are three students who last year were from the ground up in my advanced manufacturing class, or advanced construction class, and were instrumental in both implementing the beginning and through although the currently, the current status of the cabins where they are today. So of our juniors that were on this project at the beginning of last year, these three represented as good of construction students as you could ask for. The state of the cabins currently, we are unfinished and because of the logistics of traveling 20 minutes there, doing 30 minutes of work and traveling back in a single block period, at the moment we've suspended all our, all our building activities for it and left it to the professionals, as it were. So the Three Rivers Carpenters are now at the point where they are taking over where we left off. I am thrilled to announce that we are significantly ahead of where Jordan is, so I have to. And we, we have more kids, that's, that's, that's a fair thing. And we will probably poke our noses back into that project later this spring, as we've got furniture to install that's already been made in a separate class. I know for a fact that I have at least one of my seniors who graduated last year, working for Greystone right now, so this project, if nothing else, is cementing into them that demand out there in the real world for construction projects, and some of them at least are taking advantage of that and starting decent careers at it. So we appreciate everybody's support in that regard. With that, I'll give the, the mic over to Leo, do you want to start? Want to say a few words about what this project was like for you?
There was a lot of difficulties throughout the whole project, I will say that as a group we did work together well, and there was a lot of problems going on with it, but I think we overcame it, and that's it, that's all I really have to say.
Carter?
I'd say this project was meaningful, got myself interested into, I'm looking at construction management in the future, and it's gonna help me out in the future with skills and then also with like scholarships and all that. For construction, this class was a lot of fun, getting to work with everyone, meaning new people. For, it was one of those classes where it's not like a lot of in time or in-class studying and stuff, it's something you can go out and do with your hands, and I feel like a lot of students who don't usually are like a typical student for, like do good with studies, they do a lot better with classes like these, and I felt like I also did better in classes like this, and I know a lot of other people, other people can help with this. Jeff?
I'd happily ask an answer to questions if anybody has any. Sir?
Thank you for what you're doing for the students. My question is, how many students involved at the construction class?
Sure. We had, I think there was 21 originally in the advanced construction class, which was the core of the students, doing the planning, the ordering, and maintaining logistics, and then we had, I would say somewhere in the neighborhood of 150 to 160 introductory construction kids who stepped in and added some help somewhere along the way. So probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 180 to 200 students had a hand in it at some point. We also had some students from our electricity classes come in and do the wiring, and pass their electrical inspection, which is lovely. These guys, of course, passed both of their framing inspections that were required, and we had an advanced manufacturing class design and create all the furniture for the, for the cabins.
That's amazing.
Any other questions or comments?
I just want to comment that commissioners and I had the opportunity to, to take a look and tour the camper cabins, and they were solid, and nobody fell down, and, and, oh, they're in there, so, great work, and I appreciate it.
Okay, one more thing, if you guys are hungry, right across that hall over there, there's a lot of food, so, have at it. Thank you. With that, National Principals Month.
Mr. McClosick?
That's okay.
This is all I had, I thought, what else? Oh, the video you sent me. That's okay. Oh, my God. Yeah.
There's seats available up front if you need a seat. Yeah.
Wesley, do we want to jump ahead here?
While this is loading, I will probably get us started on kickoff into seven, and we'll come back to the Principals Month. So tonight, in a lot of ways, is a scale moment for us tonight. We have met with joint city councils before, but never a school board, this is our first meeting ever. And when you talk about scale, the mission of scale is to forge new and innovative ways in which government entities can collaborate and to provide superior services while making the most of limited resources, for those folks who aren't familiar with scale. And scale is the Scott County Association for Leadership and Efficiency, and it's the county board members, it's city council, it's school board members, it's the SWCD, it's the townships, it's all of our community coming together for coffee and donuts as we talk about one Friday a month. And sometimes just those talking and those relationships become a way of being and a way of working, that the outcome of the greater community is what really matters, and if we work together, we can achieve better outcomes for everybody. And so as part of Live, Learn, Earn, which was an arm of scale, trying to look at some of the important things going on in our community about 2016, one of them was early literacy, and how could we do a better job of that as a community? We had daycare, we had Scott County, we had school districts, we had pediatricians involved, the libraries involved, and we had some fits and starts and kind of got going, and then COVID hit, and then it kind of petered out, and the board, when we were talking about some of our community indicators this spring, said, we really need to focus on that, if this is a true important outcome, we need to get together and talk about that. So we had a coffee with Dr. Redmond not too long ago, and he talked about some kindergarten surprises and other things, that there's things we could do better jointly together. And so when you talk about the values of scale, it's about relationships, right? And those meetings led to discussions where their staff and our staff got together for a couple hours, a couple times, and had some really good discussions on attendance and mental health, and early literacy, and things that we could do together better. It talked about partnering, we each have resources and things that we can bring to the table in different ways if we want to align, and so we're gonna talk a little bit about partnering tonight. Innovation, we're talking here, I think, about some innovative things and trying some new things that when you talk to our child protection workers at first, they're like, you know? But it's being preventive, and how can we do things better and try to help families with better outcomes? But it's being preventive, and how can we do things? That's scary.
Oh, that's not lovely.
And then it's about education, that's one of the vows, values is education, and so learning together tonight, looking at our data, what are the things we know, what are the things we need to measure to help us get better outcomes for this community? And then influence, scale is about influence, we already, last Friday, sat and had a discussion, is there a pilot project we could do at the legislature with the support of our legislators? We were sitting there together, talking about, is there a potential pilot project that could help with attendance in school and help with communication, that maybe could be a model throughout the state of Minnesota eventually? And then the facilitation and the leadership, right? We're, tonight we're facilitating this meeting, both of your staff have done a lot of work, a lot of discussion, and the leadership you show tonight could provide some direction on where you want us to go, and things that we could work on to look at better outcomes for our students. And so it really is a scale moment, this is what scale was put together for, and we're excited to be here tonight, at least the county staff, really excited, and I know our board, Commissioner Bird does send his regrets, by the way. Are you ready for the principals?
Thank you, everybody, anybody who knows my relationship with technology knows that this is perfect, so it couldn't have happened at a better time. October is National Principals Month, and we are very pleased and proud of our principals which in Shakopee Public Schools. We ask a lot of them every day, we ask them to be both instructional leaders, and we also ask them to, to monitor our systems and make sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our families. So our communications department, led by Tiffany Olson, has put together a wonderful tribute video recognizing our principals on this month, and we will be recognizing them with a lunch at our monthly principals meeting on Wednesday. All right, I nailed hitting play. Thank you very much, and if you see a principal, be sure to give him a thank you.
I saw Principal Pollocky do that at the 2021 commencement ceremony, that was kind of interesting to get. So anyway, that's what I was gonna do, I was gonna introduce us, talk about scale, this opportunity to work together, looking for your direction tonight on a couple proposals and programs that we want to talk about, and an opportunity to meet and talk some of the data we still need to collect and take a look at. And with that, I am gonna turn it over to Chris Harder, I believe, who is gonna get us started here on seven, Shakopee Public Schools and the Scott County Collaborative.
Good evening, I just would like to join other leaders here this evening and welcoming you warmly, we are very happy to have our, our colleagues from the Shakopee Public Schools. We have been down a road to get to tonight, and have had a lot of good conversation and learned a lot about each other, and we're just really excited to talk about some of that work. I think the most important thing about tonight is to invite all of you as school board members and as county commissioners, to voice your thoughts and your opinions, whether it's agreement, disagreement. We did not want to bring forward to you a final product, we wanted to bring something that we could get some feedback on, so we're really hoping to have good conversation tonight and leave with a better product than what we came with. I'm the Quality Improvement Manager here at Scott County, and so a lot of my role is focused on our performance measurement and metrics, and, and how we use data to support really continuous improvement in our programs. And it was in that, ooh, excuse me, it was in that same spirit, I think, that our colleagues from Shakopee came forward, we actually, I was looking at the faces on the principals video, because a lot of those people were part of our conversations over the last few weeks. This is a, is an adapted word cloud, and what you're supposed to see when you look at this is a, is a student reading a book. And we took several of the strategic planning documents from both organizations, some of the value statements to create these. And, and this actually turned out much better than I was hoping, to be honest. I like that it, it focuses on students and children and families, and that those words pop out. I like that there's a lot of action words on this, that, that my hope is that this plan and this partnership can come together tonight to move us forward on some action steps, and that it is great that we like working together, and it is great that we have good collegial relationships, and how do we, like, use those to support advancement in our work. So I like the action words that came forward. And lastly, I just want to say, like, we're gonna talk about a lot of data tonight, we're gonna talk a lot about ideas, but the most important thing is to remember that all of this stuff reflects the experiences that kids are having in our schools and in our community, and I, that is the spirit that the Shakopee Public School staff came forward, that is what we try to hold on to, that we, we work hard to keep that kid focused, and, and so tonight I hope that we can be true to that mission as well. There's a couple of documents that really framed out our work, and Mike, I'm gonna come up and ask you to speak to the, well, you don't have to, you can speak from there, I guess, right? Okay. So the first is the county strategic plan, we have a specific objective for children, and in it we really look at, how do we work with community partners to build two-generation approach, building strong families, building strong parents, building strong kids, so that they can live healthy, successful lives. And included in that are some, some tactics that are specific to education, like, we are gonna foster literacy-rich environments, we're gonna create opportunities for caring adults to mentor youth, and we have a special project with the Shakopee Public Schools, a pilot on a data sharing agreement to help us look at our work and evaluate our interventions. So this helped to frame out some of the, some of the things we're gonna talk about tonight. Then we have two slides that have that kind of same material from a Shakopee perspective.
Yeah, I think for the most part, it's, it's pretty straightforward and, and self-explanatory, but, you know, what drives, this really is what drives our work, what compels us to, to do what we do each and every day, and, and we want to make sure that, that all of our systems, each of our systems measurably work for each and every student, and if you process that, that's a tough goal, but it, it's the goal we've set for ourselves, and, you know, we work every day to, to get better and better at that. You know, we want to make sure that, that each member of our organization has high expectations and provides unwavering support for each of our student learners, and then it's our responsibility to make sure that each and every student receives quality core instruction, and develops agency, their own voice, their own direction, their own genuine learning. Saw a great example of authentic, genuine learning today with our, you know, our students in the camper cabins, and we want, you know, that, that's ultimately, we're, we're teaching people how to learn ideally, and they're gonna carry that with them the rest of their lives and do great things. The next slide, you know, goes back to the heart of our school board and superintendent vision and priorities, spent a lot of work a couple years ago, kind of, hey, what are we doing? What are our priorities? What are we, what are we gonna spend the bulk of our time on? How do we move the dial? How do we, how do we create those great outcomes for each and every kid? You know, talks about that in here, there's three large areas, one is equity and inclusion, and for me, equity is that each and every kid reaches their greatest individual learning potential. And then the second part of that is, when a, when a student, each and every student walks through our doors, and their families, their parents walk through our doors, they feel that they're part of our community, that we truly are a we, and that's, again, that's part of that driving impetus of who we are and who we want to be. Student learning performance, talked about some of that, and then financial sustainability and district alignment, we, we held a little finance and facilities committee meeting before this. We've got good news coming out with the audit for the past school year that concluded June 30th of 2023, and it'll be the first time in nine years that our school district has finished with an unassigned fund balance, where our policy says it should be, between eight and 12%. And so that's been a big part of the board, and their vision and priorities as well.
Thank you. So all of that brings us to the value that we set on this, on this collaborative plan, or this collaborative strategic plan and the work that we'll do together going forward. So we value education for all children, we recognize that Scott County and the Shakopee Public Schools District serve the same children and families in our own ways, with our own resources, and that we are all trying to support positive educational outcomes for kids. We all held a focus on prevention and early intervention as our best opportunity for impact, and we place value on our existing partnerships. People spoke about the quality of their own teams, they spoke about the quality of our working relationships together, and how do we weave that into an action plan so that each organization can bring what we do best to the equation and create the biggest impact for children and youth in our community? So with that, we're gonna talk a little bit first about some data, and I'm gonna start with some community indicators that we use at the county annually, we look at this data annually. We also have some corresponding data from the Shakopee School District, it is not an apples-to-apples comparison, but it is corresponding data, so you can see kind of how are kids faring in our community overall, and then what is the experience of students in Shakopee Public Schools? So the first thing we look at is probably not a surprise, and that is on-time high school graduation rates, and so this looks at what percentage of kids graduate within four years of entering ninth grade. That Scott County's performance is reflected in the blue bars, and that has trended up really over the last 10 years, and exceeds state performance. Mike, you want to talk about the next couple of slides?
Yeah, and I'm happy, I should have mentioned, I'm happy to answer questions on anything we present, or, you know, even later on, if you have a question a couple days from now, don't hesitate to reach out. But what we're trying to do is give sort of a, a meaningful picture this evening, there's tons of data, and we've tried to select pieces that we think have, have some meaning and impact for us, and this is one that shows, you know, our district's high school graduation, right? You know, and the trends over time, by different cohorts, you see the, you know, the total, all students in the columns on the left, and then, you know, I, I think all of us here have, you know, heard people talk about achievement gaps and graduation gaps, and there's some great efforts for us to, to make sure, again, it's at each and every student, and we've got some numbers that are improving for many of our subgroups, and then we've got, you know, a couple that aren't, and we're continually looking at that, and we've even, you know, we've been working to create a set of board, school board performance measures or indicators, and one of those is on track to graduate, and it starts in ninth grade, as soon as we have any data, you know, from quarter one on, and, you know, we're, we're looking at each and every kid, and then if somebody is kind of falling off that, being on track, we try to get them back on track as quickly as possible and intervene in doing things like that. So we're taking that macro data, you, you've got the county picture, we've got our district, and then we typically are breaking it apart, and targeting our, you know, our efforts where it's gonna impact and, and move the dial forward. This is the, for people who like spreadsheets, or, you know, squared columns, I guess, same data as before, and, you know, and then you'll see it broken apart by those different student groups, and, you know, and again, doing that just to discern, hey, are we, are some groups, you know, performing differently than others, and if so, then why is that? And let's try to, you know, where it's good things, let's try to replicate that, and where there's areas for growth, let's, let's try to help put as many students on that path to, to strong academic growth as we possibly can.
The next community level measure that we look at is the percent of students in third grade who can read at grade level, and it has been our understanding that this is a good marker, maybe not a predictor, but a really good marker of the likelihood of high school graduation. And so I'd just like to open the floor for a minute to anybody in the education field, like, are we paying attention to the right thing? Is that the right? Is that the right, is that the right focus for the county? That's, isn't that your question?
So what do you, Chris, what are you asking? Is this a good measure or not a good?
Yeah, if, we spend a lot of time talking about this particular set of data. And so I'm just wondering if people in the education field see it as a good indicator of success. Otherwise, maybe we're paying too much attention to something that maybe isn't so significant.
Because I think we've looked at this number for quite a while.
Yep, yep.
And it's going down.
Yes.
And that's, in my eyes, that's not a good thing.
Correct.
You know, graduations rates are going up, but this number is one of the bigger numbers from what we are being told how.
Yep.
I don't know how I make that go upward, but anyone else can chime in on that?
Are these the numbers that are presented by the state through MCA testing? Is that what, I see the source is Minnesota Compass, but what, where is that data coming from? Is it the MCA test?
It is the MCA data, yes.
All right.
So do you think it's important? Is this, should we be paying attention to this? We're going to look at, we have some Shakopee specific data we're going to look at in a minute.
Chris, what third grade year was the final, was like two, just a curiosity?
What did we, we calculated that out, didn't we? Twenty thirteen?
Twenty thirty-one?
Twenty thirteen?
Yeah. Yeah, twenty thirteen would be.
Have to go back about nine years. So in twenty thirteen, fourteen, there was sixty percent county-wide higher than that than those grad rates were.
Are these the third graders or are these the seniors?
These are the third graders.
Third grade proficiency.
So the twenty, the class of twenty-two will graduate years from now.
Like in twenty thirty-one?
Yes, these are third graders in twenty.
But these are third graders. So the class of twenty thirteen third graders were your twenty twenty-two graduates.
I mean, this number is looked at across the country. A lot of other states look at this number. Some states choose to build their prisons based on this number. So if you can't read in third grade, your percentage for graduation as well, your percentage for being a criminal.
Would you mind coming up here? Would you mind? So this number is.
Could you give us your, could you give us your name and?
Sure. Hi, I'm Nikki Gill. I'm the principal of Shakopee Area Catholic School.
Perfect.
So thanks for having this meeting. I'm not saying if this number is the right number to look at or not, but I do think it's a very common number looked at, like I said, across the country. Some states build prisons based on this number. So they forecast if they have a low reading group in third grade, they will start to build prisons because their numbers would indicate you'll have more prisoners when those kids are eighteen. I would argue you could put that money into reading intervention and solve a lot of problems. I think it's a, I mean, you have to pick a number from somewhere. I also think there's so much that can happen in a child's life between third grade and when they're eighteen. But there's so many variables that could happen in that amount of time that, but you also need to pick a number to have something to look at, to compare and have a baseline looking ahead and looking backwards. There's also been so much in the country that's happened with the pandemic and that's going to affect your numbers for quite a few years of kids having interrupted educational experiences. So it's hard. But I think like if you look back, that data would be, you know, these last few years are going to be skewed because of the pandemic. But you do need a baseline. So kind of whatever you pick and work from that, you just have to pick apples-to-apples.
I think that this number is what you see most often because it's something that is statewide, so it's a baseline that everybody uses. Everyone takes this test. And I agree that, I believe that there are situations that impact these numbers. COVID obviously is going to impact these numbers. But I also think that this is one point in time when these tests are taken by these students. And I think that this is one data point that needs to be considered. But I think that there are other things I know that we do in our district from a testing and assessment perspective that I think might be a better indicator. And then maybe Mike can talk a little bit to that. But it's, I guess, from a county perspective, maybe it is a number that you want to look at because it would be consistent across all schools in Scott County. I don't know what else they use for assessments in the other districts. But it is one that is constant to look at. From our perspective, I think we look at other indicators.
Yes.
Other assessment tools.
Yes.
To validate whether that number is actually accurate. Because I feel that that number might not be as accurate because it is one point in time.
Okay, let's look at some of those other factors that your district considers and some of the predictive analytics.
It was good, I was going to answer anyhow, so.
Oh, were you going to, were you going to? No, no, I would love to hear what you have to say.
No, no, you can, yeah, there is a good spot. We could spend another meeting talking about the, you know, the MCA as an assessment tool. It has, absolutely has some value. It sometimes doesn't have the value that people think it does. It's a great indicator of, you know, your reading curriculum and pieces. There are better indicators, you know, to Christie's point about individual students and more importantly, individual student growth over time. But in terms of dialing in to third-grade reading proficiency as the right place, absolutely. As far as, you know, data in education in the United States goes, there's been a lot of data longitudinally, you know, so over a long period of time that shows a very strong and consistent correlation between students who are reading proficiently by the end of third grade and high school graduation rates. And again, it's a correlation, but it's strong. So it's not a, you know, there are things that might sidetrack a kid or two. And there, you know, certainly there are things where, hey, if you're not proficient at the end of third grade, we need to be aware of that and help you to become proficient as quickly as we possibly can. We do, to Christie's point, and again, I think that's kind of, there'll be a theme. It's a good macro goal. It's a good macro look at things. We begin, well, we begin actually before kindergarten in terms of, you know, we have programming that leads right into our kindergarten, our primary grades and elementary grades. And we, well, we beat the state to the punch, you know, this year too. They did a lot of work on their Read Well programming. We had launched, and it's in your packet, where we're doing a lot of good things in terms of literacy, but we know that we can be doing even better. And so we have what we call a comprehensive literacy framework. As part of that, we're using FastBridge or FAST, which are assessments that really pull apart a lot of discrete elements of literacy. And they start in kindergarten. And you typically do those, you know, once in the fall, once in the winter and once in the spring. Sometimes if you're, you know, if you're trying an intervention with a student, you might do it, you know, before the intervention and then after. But you're really trying to see, number one, how is that student's literacy proficiency growing in a number of different areas? And then we've learned a lot about, you know, how kids' brains develop, how they become literate. And that's some of the stuff you're hearing, you know, with science of reading and other things. There's no magic formula. But, you know, we can see, hey, a kid is struggling with a certain part of developmental literacy. The best time to intervene is as soon as possible. And there can be really targeted interventions, different ways to try to learn those really important building blocks of literacy. So that's my, actually, believe it or not, that's my somewhat short spiel on the subject, so. And then what we've brought with, kind of to shift gears, where we're going to, one of the things that we've shared just recently with our school board, some of the Star Tribune does every year, where they take a look at MCA scores, but then they bring another factor in where there's a correlation between students in poverty and different educational outcomes. And so we see it as, they have a line there on each of these. On the left are reading scores, MCA reading scores. The right are math scores. And then they do a predictive analysis for basically all schools in the state of Minnesota. And if your dot is above that line, you're outperforming what they would predict for your particular elementary school in this case, in terms of reading or math. I'm not going to go into each of our elementary schools. But again, we're trying to pull the data apart. We look within the schools, we look within the grade levels, we look at the individual students. And again, trying to make adjustments to the curriculum, to how we teach, to how kids learn, to how we intervene. There's some good news in terms of each of our five elementary schools. They all outperform their predicted outcome, you know, when you factor in poverty according to this measure. So if we scroll through those and get to the middle schools, what we're digging into, they both, they kind of look similar. They outperform in reading and then not in math. And we've already begun digging into kind of some of that math curriculum stuff. We know there's some challenges there. So some of it is the sequencing and how does it even match up to the MCA exam? Which, you know, and then there's another decision to be made. Do you care or not if it's going to, you know, now your eighth grade scores, for example, might be higher than they otherwise would be. But we're in the process of a math curriculum review and beginning to implement a new math curriculum. We'll be doing the same with literacy or language arts coming up. And then you'll notice if you go through the packet, your question will be, where are the high school scores? The high school MCA scores have lost a ton of validity. They never really had a lot because the individual kid goes, well, what happens to me if I don't try my hardest on this? And the answer is absolutely nothing. You don't even get the score some, you know, you get a score and that's it. It's not in your transcript. No college that I'm aware of has ever said, hey, what's your, what are your MCA scores? Now, if it's the ACT or the SAT, yep, that has a lot of meaning. And so what happened was we maybe had opt-outs without opting out, you know, a few years ago. Well, now we just have opt-outs. We had hundreds of high school students opt out the last couple of years because they're, why do I need to take this? And, you know, we try to tell them it's important. It helps our school get, you know, a sense of our curriculum and doing some of that. But so far, that has, that has not been a compelling argument in our favor.
All right, thank you. The last community indicator that we're going to look at tonight is the percent of students who feel connected to a caring adult in their school. And this is data that we look at every year because the research shows, the child development research in particular, shows that when kids are connected to a caring adult outside their family, they are more likely to be socially and academically successful. They are less likely to be bullied. They are more likely to pursue a plan, whether that's a four-year college or a two-year college or a tech school or whatever. They are more likely to pursue a plan after high school. And so this is county data that is drawn from the Minnesota Student Survey that is issued every three years, two years? Three years? Three. And so when we look at this, this supports some of the work that we hope to do around building some mentorships and building some connections for students and youth. Whoops, that's not what I wanted to do. You know, we know that coaches, teachers, you are in such a completely perfect environment to establish these kinds of relationships with kids and do that every single day. We feel fortunate in our partnership with your school district to share with the academies of Shakopee programs and particularly the CAPS programs. I actually met many of you about five years ago. One of your CAPS students did a presentation at your school board meeting. Name was Hymani Joshi. I don't know if any, if that name rings a bell. Right, I know, we like celebrate her, we're still celebrating her. She like is working in Madison now and graduated from college, but we're still talking about her. And it was really an important, like, that's a kid who would have been successful no matter what. But how great that she had people along the way through extension, through her school district, through the county, through her employer, through all those people to support her progress. And so we just really wanted to just recognize the importance that the academies and the CAPS students have and our willingness to be a part of that. Mike, you want to talk about this caring adult from Shakopee?
Yeah, and again, it's kind of that theme. And this is something, this is a project that we've done at the middle schools in the past. So we have some longitudinal data there. But we felt it was such an important question to ask. And there's actually four of them that we would call student wellness. And one of them is, you know, is there, do you feel connected to a caring adult? And these are just, you know, and I'm not even sure which year the data is. I think, well, last year, it says on the top there for West. But even looking at, you know, and trying to put it in student-friendly language and then trying to see, you know, is there growth from quarter one to quarter four? There appears to be, you know, in the, you know, is there an adult at West that you feel comfortable going to if you need help with something? Some of the others are more kind of flat or even slight decreases. And then East Middle School was, that is the, I'm trying to look at Tiffany but didn't see her. That is, right, the trusted adult question?
Right.
Yep. And again, trying to look at it, you know, there, there's a really nice pattern going from quarter one to quarter four for last year, which, again, I think does a couple of things. One, it gives us, you know, we're ongoing data. And we have a lot of adults in our community, you know, whether it's folks at Scott County, whether it's a lot of other organizations and certainly within Shakopee Public Schools that work really hard to build, you know, strong trusting relationships with students. And a lot of times it's like, well, I don't know if that's making any difference. And so when we see the data, you know, where it grows, the number, the percentage grows from quarter one to quarter four, I think that's an indicator that, yes, you're having an impact during that school year. So we've taken four questions in this vein and just started to ask them of all students in grades four through 12 because we think it's that important, that valuable and that pertinent of information. So again, taking, you know, what the Minnesota Student Survey or part of what they do every three years and building on that and doing it four times a school year across a number of grades.
Thank you. I think the last piece to remember about this connected to a caring adult is that it encourages and promotes kids wanting to be at school. And we're going to talk about attendance in a few minutes. And so that sense of connection, particularly to adults in the schools, really supports those outcomes as well. All right, so with that baseline of those kind of overarching data sets, let's talk about the collaborative planning work that we did. We focused on two particular areas of concern. Early childhood screenings and improving consistent attendance. And we're going to look at those each separately. So here's what we did. We pulled together a collaborative planning team and that included Superintendent Redman, Assistant Superintendent.
McClosbridge.
McClosbridge, I'm so sorry. I, thank you, thank you. I know, I do, that's why, that's why I stumbled up here. So we also pulled together principals, social workers, program directors from our teams, directors and managers, program leads, tried to get a good cross-section of people to talk about what are the strengths, where are our gaps and what can we do about it? So that's what we're going to share with you next. Starting with early childhood screening rates. So here's the leadership challenge. And this came from both the county and the school. What could we do in the next year that would make a meaningful difference in the number of kids who receive early childhood screenings? Like, let's just get going. Someone else said, I think a hundred percent of our kids should receive screenings. And someone else said, every child served in our WIC clinic should be screened. And so really hearing urgency in the, from the leadership. This is just a quick look at the requirements for early childhood screenings. When we talk about early childhood screenings, there is a list of elements that children are screened for. Those screenings are required by law. Kids are required, if you are entering a public school, you're required to have an assessment before you enter or within 30 days of entering kindergarten. And that evaluation or that assessment can be conducted by a school personnel or another entity that's meeting the same, the same standards. It's interesting, this requirement falls under the school board responsibility, which was really surprising to me that that's where it showed up in the statute.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
What is the youngest age of a child that we would screen? Is it three, is it four? What is the typical?
Could one of you or two of you come up and, because let's talk about this a little bit? Could one of you or two of you come up and, because let's talk about this a little bit?
Is it three?
Yep.
Yep, sorry.
Forty, forty months, forty months is the target.
Forty months is the target, that's the ideal. Okay? Other questions about the procedures around screening or the requirements? All right, again, could two of you come up? This is a, we tried to put together a graphic. I think sometimes it's difficult to understand how kids come into these systems and what happens to them once they come into these systems. And so we tried to put together a graphic just to explain in brief what, like what happens for kids as they come forward. So Lisa, would you mind just walking briefly, or Mary Kay, just walking briefly through that graphic?
So the early childhood screening process, it involves a variety of different screening tests, including vision and hearing, height and weight. We review the immunization record, we look at the healthcare coverage, and then we identify risk factors through a variety of tests that include a parent report on a behavior and what they're witnessing. There is some differences between the school districts and what tools that they use. Shakopee's is the, is it called the MIPSY? MIPSY, just for your information. And that will take a look at behavior and in checking to see if the child is developing on time and is doing age-appropriate behavior, particularly social and emotional, speaking, language, thinking. And that's why we don't really start that until about three, like 40 months, because it's very difficult, anybody under that, to do some of these tests. Most of the early childhood screening is conducted by the school district. Prior to that, public health, early head start, we do some developmental screening up until then and we do connect kids that are identified, zero to two. If they're identified with a behavioral need or any kind of need, we connect them with the school district through the follow-along and early childhood special education. So right now, we're really trying to connect parents with the school district and making sure that they have opportunities to screen and get screened at three. And we're also participating.
Do you want to say anything about the graph? I think that's okay right now. Is that, is that what you wanted? Yeah, do you want to just hang out here for a second? So I think the important piece is, is as you look at where those two little checklists are, the magic is, the requirement is for kids to be screened before they go to kindergarten, but if we can screen them early enough, we have time to provide those remediation services. And both the school and the county staff saw, like, once a child has an identified need, the process to get them into the appropriate services is pretty seamless. So on that back end, kids that are referred are getting into the programming that they need. And so while it's certainly, you know, we screen a lot of four-year-olds and we screen a lot of four-year, or five-year-olds, screening early gives time for them to catch up. This is data that we look at annually here at the county. This is from the Department of Education. And one of the things that I think Mike alluded to earlier is that we have really wrangled in this project with data from the Department of Education. And part of our action plan going forward is going to be to agree upon some data sets that we can report to both boards so that we have some consistency and that it means the same thing to all of us as we go forward. This is a percent of kindergartners who are screened at age, or screened at three by district.
Chris, could you go back? I just.
Yep.
Yeah, there were some, we did a lot of work with data. This is one where I have no qualms with the Department of Ed's data. I have qualms with how we're performing. We've got to do much better with this, with the three-year-old data.
And so we pulled out, we pulled out a look at, like a little closer look at the Shakopee data, looking not only at three-year-olds but also at four- and five-year-olds. And that really, that request came at the request of some of the early, early ed teaching staff. And so this data shows like at which age kids were screened in each kindergarten class.
Chris, can I ask a question?
Yep.
Or maybe Lisa or Mary Kay can answer even. So the kids we see at WIC, right, we see some of these kids who need the support. Are we actually screening them at three to this 40 months? Or are we just referring them to the school? If we're able to do the screening, are we performing those?
Right now, we are working to connect those three-year-olds to the school district. So we have some built-in processes where parents can get, will get connected directly to the school district. We do find that the school district is missing a lot of the names of the kids and the addresses. And WIC has the most current addresses on record. So by doing those connections, the school district is able to outreach to those kids to ensure that they're scheduled. We also have staff that are now assisting WIC clients with making those appointments with the school district. And when needed, we're doing hearing and vision to get them started. And we're also, we can, we do have the capacity now to do screening right there at WIC if needed, if there's other barriers. So the answer is yes.
I have one other question.
Yeah.
So Mike, if we do do the screening between 36 and 40 months and we find there is some type of need or service, is that something then the school takes over then? Is there funding for that or the benefit to doing that so they're not showing up when they're five or?
Well, I think that's, that's what we've been working on. And the short answer is yes, there is. And that, that obviously, our challenge, we do pretty well, especially for the four-year-olds and five-year-olds, that we know where they are, who they are, we've got their, their contact information. We have to prioritize the three-year-olds, you know, that are about 40 months. I don't think we, you know, that would be one of those pieces in these conversations where I think we, we felt pretty good about the four- and five-year-olds and there's still some work to be done there as well. But we, we really need to dig in with the three-year-olds. But I think that, some of that is also, you know, if you're, if you're at 40 months, you're not, you may not be thinking about kindergarten, so you're not kind of connecting with the school district, sharing your information with us. And that was, you know, what, what Lisa was talking about. Very often, the county through the programs know who the kids are, where they are and addresses, so they can help connect the families to us. And we see that as, as definitely a better path forward. Because, yeah, we, there's no reason not to screen or to wait to screen. The more we know, the sooner we know, the greater, the higher the percentage of kids we know it about, the better we can serve our students and our families and our communities. And, you know, if a student has some kind of a learning challenge, the best time to begin, you know, working on, you know, kind of helping improve that situation is immediately. So we really, you know, especially, we do a great job, I think, with our early childhood, you know, special services for students. But you got to know who they are and get them involved in that. And we've, you know, to be quite frank, and we've had these discussions, we have too many kids who walk in the doors at kindergarten and it's like, whoa. We didn't know who you were and now we do the screening and we go, boy, we wish we would have known who you were a couple of years ago to kind of get things started. And we're now going to dig in and do absolutely the best we can. So that's, that's, you know, those are the pieces of the system that, you know, we've been open, honest with. And I think that's, you know, we're doing, there's a lot of good things happening now in the system. But we know we can do a better job moving forward and especially by working together. I think we, we kind of hold, you know, if we do a great job collaborating, the ultimate results will be much better than if we try to, try to stay in silos.
Yeah, I think that's such a great point. And, and I think we have had really honest, frank conversations about early childhood screening. The screen that you have in front of you right now are the key points of the work groups that we pulled together, the combination of school and county staff. What were those things that were identified as a strength? And I want to call your attention down to the fourth bullet under strength. So to do screenings, it's like I've learned so much from my school partners. So to do screenings, you need three things. You need space, appropriate space, you need equipment, and you need skilled evaluators. And so we have, like, a strength of our system is we hold all three of those resources at the county. Our public health staff has trained assessors. We have the equipment and we have space in our Readmobile, in our libraries, in our family resource centers. Like, we can accommodate this process if you need us. And so we've actually built some things into, into this action plan that we'll talk about in a minute. But I think that's really important to know that it is a shared, that we are like looking at shared resources at this point. Some other strengths, we do see increases in, in kids and parents coming forward when we do incentive programs or if we do like a media blast or a public awareness blast. And I think this is a huge strength. Like, you as leaders are in a position to really focus attention on this. We have what I think is a pretty concrete plan. Like, I hope you'll hold us to the fire to produce, quite honestly. When we identify gaps, we see opportunity to expand the number of people or organizations that are referring families and supporting families to get screened. We see some opportunity to expand scheduling opportunities and maybe some transportation for people to receive screening. And overall, we just need better data. Like, I don't know how many times you'll hear me say that tonight, but that will be part of our action plan as well. Questions about that?
I just have a quick question before we move on. It was back on the data. I know the data goes back to 2013, I think, on the county information.
Yep.
I'm curious to know the impact, and I'm talking specifically to Shakopee numbers. It looks like it's hovered somewhere between the 34, 26% swing over those, that time period, 10 years. But I'm curious of what, maybe what, and we probably, I don't know if there's anybody here that would have this information, but what were those numbers before the big growth happened in this, in the county? If the growth, the significant growth has any impact into the number of kids being screened? I, I'm just throwing that out there, probably not, but, I mean, we grew fast. Once 169 bridge opened up and people started moving here. And I'm just wondering if there's any sort of a tie or correlation between the information that might be there. I don't know, but.
That is the kind of research I would love to do for you and report back.
Just a thought.
Yeah.
And maybe you know this, Chris, or maybe Lisa does. I think if we go 10 years back, somewhere around there, before there, there was the push to screen at age three. Because it's not that much into history where screening was done at four. And, and I don't know when the year was, years were when, and all the best practices showed. Meaning at three is better to identify things and give that time before kindergarten. So that might be another piece.
It's a great point.
That when we look at this, I don't, it doesn't change the results. It doesn't change that we want to get more kids in this area screened at age three. But it helps illustrate the same thing you're talking about with the growth is maybe in 2010, everybody was at 10% because we just didn't screen at age three.
Right.
But Chris, there was a correlation, I think you said states there, right? As the percent increase in state of the third grade reading also, yeah, this is not even, that did go as well.
Yeah, we did, we did do some data analysis looking at like, for example, 2013 compared to 2022. And we did find that there was definitely a correlation between those kids that when they were screened at three, when that rate went up, the third grade reading levels also went up. When it went down, third grade reading levels also went down. So there was a definite correlation between that. So if we are putting a lot of weight in reading at third grade as a metric, then this is definitely correlated with that.
You know, and you could argue that if you look at the other numbers, what happened between 21 and 22? For example, in New Prague, that's a big drop. And is there, what's?
COVID.
Is it COVID? Because there's not another district that had such a significant drop.
Yeah. We have done some inquiries because some of those small schools had really high performance. And so like what was happening? So we went out like Bell Plain is a district that has historically performed pretty well. So we did some, just some like inquiry about what's working well here. And that idea of a little bit smaller, well, a significantly smaller school, but really the ability to have more of a hands-on connection with families. And, and then that led to some really good discussion with your staff about how could we create that in a school the size of Shakopee? How do you get a little more of that personal, personal touch? All right. All right, let's move into the plan. So the first, you have a copy of the plan in your packet. Leslie, do you have it there? Can you hold it up just so people know what they're looking at? Yep, that's it, thank you. And so we started with a value statement that I shared earlier. And then we set two objectives. And the first objective is to address increases in early childhood screenings. And then the idea is that children will receive early childhood screenings at age three to maximize opportunities to address those barriers, ensure that the schools are prepared to receive them, promote parent engagement and education, and make long-term impact on students' academic success. The outcome that we're looking for here is to double those percentages. Now, here's where the data gets tricky, because what we wanted to do was put a number there. The number we agreed on was 40%, but the data is so, so inconsistent that, that what we're going to shoot for is this doubling of the percentage of the students that are currently being screened. And as we refine data, I think that metric will get a little more refined. So that's the, that's where we're going. And here's how we're going to get there. Working together, we're going to expand the network of referral sources and enhance the existing referral process. So Lisa and Mary Kay, as representatives from our public health, I don't know if there's any pieces of this that you want to specifically speak to, but we, we agreed that we were going to identify five new groups of service providers, like people who are under-reporting or not, or under-referring or not referring now, and look at who has the most potential to impact young families and to support kids getting into screening. And that we'll do some targeted outreach to those groups. We talked about coordinating media blitzes, calendars for outreach, doing a better job of teaming those outreach efforts. We know that some of the CAPS students are set up to support collecting and distributing some of the material. Our public health staff has agreed to expand some of their efforts, their existing efforts to refer children to early childhood screenings. We have a texting system that we think is going to be pretty effective as soon as we can get that implemented. We are, we are, if you're from the, on the county side, there's a long, a long sad story around that text. But we're working on that. At the Shakopee schools is going to change their intake forms so we can see who's referring these families, so we know which parts of our efforts are effective and where our outreach might not be. And lastly, public health is going to support the school building a complete census so you have better data about how many kids are, are actually in your, on your records. So do you guys want to speak more to any of those points?
Certainly. So when we did a crosswalk of the data that we have, because we get all of the birth records compared to the school, the school district was missing about 31% of the names of the kids right in your school census, which is directly tied to when kids show up at kindergarten and you don't even know that they're in the district. So by doing a crosswalk, we have identified those that are missing from your list and we are doing mailing. We will be doing mailings directly to them and giving them opportunities to get on the list. That will be, I think, a huge, a huge win. The other piece is to, they shouldn't, one of the things that we're building right into our process, we're changing quite a bit of our, our system. So by the time that child turns 40 months, they have heard six to 10 times that when their kid is three, turns three, that they need to do their early childhood screen. So we're building it into, when we do a mailing for birth, we're doing, we're building it into child and teen checkup information. We're building it into the WIC process. So every time they, that we connect with these kids, we remind them, you know, at three, you need to connect. you need to connect with your school district and, and your child needs an early childhood screen. Another piece of that is, um, when they do turn three, this is when the texting will come in, that we have a lot of kids in our database that we can automatically send a text to them. Okay, now you're three, it's time to go get your early childhood screen. So it's not a surprise for the family. They know it's coming and we've already hopefully answered any of their questions and reduced some of their concerns related to that. So it will be part of just an automatic thing for them, hopefully.
Thanks. I think part of the, um, part of the emphasis and, and Mike, I think spoke really, really firmly to this in our meetings was we wanted this plan to be an expansion of what is existing, like not what we have always done, but what can we do differently? So, um, these are, these represent pieces we can do to expand referral sources for kids. The next strategy is, is, um, expanding opportunities for the actual screening. So we have one set of stuff for the referrals, we have another set for the screenings. And I think the Shakopee School District really stepped on, up on this. They took a look at their current scheduling, um, calendars and have expanded that to include some, um, some additional evening appointments, um, and, uh, one Saturday a month, or one Saturday a quarter. Our public health staff has agreed to start doing hearing and screenings and sending that onto the school so that it takes less time for an evaluator to do each screen. And it, it puts public health out in the community, talking to people, um, again, as Lisa said, about screenings more and more. So we'll do that out in the field, either at WIC appointments or at family resource centers. We're going to agree on three or four data measures related to screening to share with you in a year. And, um, we're going to crosswalk the kids who enter kindergarten without screenings to see if we can identify any missed opportunity. What are the missed opportunities that those kids had in common for future efforts? And lastly, we're going to pull that team together in February. We're going to take a look at it. If we are in track, great. And if we are not on track, then we're create, going to create a plan for public health to come in and support the efforts of the Shakopee Public Schools staff in doing more screenings. So comments or questions? Like what do you think about this plan to improve early childhood screening rates? What do you like or what falls short? Yes, ma'am? Wish no weapon break.
Yeah, thank you, Chris. Uh, you know, we, we at the county board, we've looked at this data for years and we talk about it in terms of, you know, healthy, livable, safe communities and how we want to support families. And I just think these two topics here tonight, I'm probably backing up an hour, but these two topics tonight with early childhood screening and with attendance, there are ways that we can be supporting and working together. Because especially the kids who are pre-kindergarten, there's, uh, so many ways the county touches them. We hope the kids who are not attending school, we don't have to have those touches with them. And that's what we're really working on. So we hope that, um, and, and what was presented tonight is just what we've really been working towards and asking for is, let's get to work, let's see if we can, can change that dial, let's see if more kids get screened and, and then they, they get into school and read better by third grade. So, uh, thank you. I think I'd really like to see the specific goals for the next year, to see where we're going on that. And, um, I'm thankful we're, we're hitting the ground.
Thank you. Other thoughts, other things that people, um, appreciate or don't appreciate about the ideas that are in front of you?
Um, I had a quick question. So I actually work in childcare and, um, I know a lot of worlds I'm in, but I work, I work in childcare and I work in a bilingual childcare, uh, facility down in Prior Lake, kind of near my house. And I was just wondering, there, I, I know a lot of, of students, or not students, but children that go to the daycare have parents that are sometimes, um, not documented. So those parents, how would, would they be receiving the same information, the same way? Or like, is there kind of some kind of blockage or like, how did they receive?
Good question.
So, um, public health serves, um, all kids, whether they're documented or undocumented. And we have translated materials in English, Spanish, Somali and Russian. So, uh, they would be receiving the same information through WIC, through child and teen checkup. And we also have some cultural, uh, community connectors, uh, that speak, uh, Spanish as well as Russian. So we do face-to-face, we do mailings, we do emails, and they're all within those, the native language. Uh, we are also reaching out to daycares to provide some of this information. And not just the licensed daycares, but also the friends, families and neighbors network as well, that typically serves a high percentage of families that may not speak English or may be undocumented. But we, we serve them regardless.
That's awesome. Thank you. And I believe that the Shakopee School District has, um, Spanish-speaking evaluators and, and, um, has the ability to, uh, to test kids in their own language.
Uh, yeah, and also I would add, um, as far as, um, elder childhood, I used to be a cultural liaison.
Oh, yes.
Uh, so, um, Shakopee Public Schools, they are very good, um, they are wonderful, you know, to make the assessments, uh, for the elder childhood. Um, also each community, they have, uh, interpreters.
Yes.
Um, so Spanish, Somali, uh, Russian, um, they do a very good job. Um, but we haven't seen, uh, this collaboration. So this is the beginning. And I think we can achieve, uh, a lot of things. There's a lot of, uh, good things going on. One of the, um, addition is the Family Resource Center.
Yes.
It's a great space and, and they're doing a fantastic job. People feel comfortable when the, the county made a partnership with the community, like, uh, East African, Hispanic, uh, other communities. So everyone, uh, feel comfortable and I think we are thriving. So I'm encouraging, you know, this, I don't want this to be last meeting. So we can maybe, um, uh, twice a year. And then we can give each other assignments and, and then we can come back what has been done and what hasn't, has not been done. So I'm sorry, I, I, I don't want to, I can't talk all day. I will stop, you know?
I, I appreciate, uh, the place that you come from in terms of, um, your interest in staying and monitoring and making sure things are moving forward and that we're all connected. I really do appreciate that. So thank you.
So a little bit along the lines of what Mohammed was saying about, so, um, you mentioned it, like the goal is to get three-year-olds. We know who they are when they come in, when they're four and five. Now we know who they are and presumably we'll know something about where they came from, what sub-communities are they a part of? And do we have what we need to identify? Like what are, uh, do we have the right community liaisons to reach out to those groups for the younger generations that are coming in? And, you know, what churches do they go to, uh, you know? Who can we contact to make sure we're reaching those groups in the future?
Do you, that, you want to speak to that?
I can just, I can just add a piece. I'm Mary Kay Stevens. I'm a supervisor in our family health program areas in public health. And, um, a, a piece of what we already do in some of our programmatic work is to work with interpreters or people that they have relationships with, to engage them and be that trusted messenger. Talk with them about their barriers, their concerns, help them understand how to navigate the systems or what we're asking of them. And so it's really just being intentional and integrating that into what we already do. And then partnering with, um, with the capacity that it sounds like you already have in the schools, what we heard, what I heard in the recent meeting from your screening staff. And, um, for example, just one small example is, uh, if you have more capacity to serve those that speak other languages, the staff said, help us fill the days. We, we have days that we bring in people that are trained and ready to do screenings in those languages. We need help to get those slots filled in to get families there. And that's a piece of what we already do as part of our programs. And that will be building in more intentionally into things like WIC and, um, times of the FRC and things like that. So.
Suzanne, maybe you could hit a little bit on the FRC too and, and the navigators, I think. Mohammed hit on it there a little bit, Abraham did, but maybe you could add to that. And I think also the library is another one where we would expect they're giving that message as well.
Sure. Thanks, Leslie. Uh, good evening Suzanne, Artson Deputy Director with Human Services. So, um, the Family Resource Center really was designed to, um, be a universal access point for families to get the services and supports that they need. So as part of that work, we have four cultural navigators, um, from four different agencies, serving predominantly our Latinx and East African or Somali communities. And so anytime families are coming in, um, they might come in for housing, but if we see they've got little kids, we're talking about, um, right? Have you had your, what school district? Have you had your child screened? If not, how do we help you get connected for screening and with the district? So it is about how do we build, um, connections with, uh, our community at large to then support that connection with our school district partners.
So Suzanne, going to Mr. Johnson's question. Is it, is that a place where you're going to identify? Like if there are families coming in who come from a different, a new or a different cultural background that we are not already serving, like Family Resource Center would be a place where they're likely to, um, be identified and hooked up? Is that right?
Correct. Correct.
All right. Well, thank you.
Other comments or questions about screening before we move to attendance?
You know, I just have one comment, something to think about as you are, you know, I think you've done a great job of outlining our objective and how are we going to get there? About the different tactics. I'm wondering, once you have fine-tuned and kind of gotten to a point where yes, this is the data that we want to track, we've gotten to that point, um, is there a way to kind of, uh, identify a cohort of students to track through their education journey in our schools? To see the impact of what we are doing here and whether it's reading, math, what have you, whatever you would identify as some of the measurement marks. I know we do that a little bit with the academies. Once we had a class go through all of the academies and starting to enter college, did they stay, stay in that career path, those sorts of things?
Sure.
But I'm just wondering if that would be some sort of an indicator of success? I mean, you can say, yes, I'm going to hit these numbers and when you do it, great. But can we follow a group of kids from K or pre-K through twelve to measure their success academically? And see if this program that we did upfront at three years old made a difference?
So I think we're attempting to address that in this, in the very first baby step into that, into that equation through the data sharing agreement with Shakopee. And, um, I think that, that, that is certainly work that we can build on. And I'd be interested in talking more with you about that. I think it is a great idea. We want to know. Yikes. We'd like to know too, right? What interventions are making the biggest difference and, and what can we see from those patterns as kids go through? And, and I think the work that our public health department has done on the data sharing agreement is like our best first step.
And I'm sure it'll be hard because things change. You, you know, new reading curriculum or math curriculum, how does that impact? Or how does that change the success of kids as they go through their educational journey?
Right.
Just a thought.
It's a good thought. Any other comments or questions, points of disagreement? All right, let's move on to attendance then. Thank you very much. Um, so the second, um, the second objective of our plan is promoting consistent attendance. And, um, just, can, just to be completely, completely honest, um, we have done a lot more of a deep dive into the screening data than we have been able to do with attendance. And there's a lot of work happening at a lot of levels around improving attendance. So what we wanted to do is start and show you, um, what county programs, um, are, are currently set up to intervene early for kids who are not consist, consistently attending school. So Nikki, are you going to speak to this? Do you want to just walk through at a high level this side and then we'll look at the data?
Sure. So last school year was the first year that Scott County entered into, uh, a partnership with St. Davids. So St. Davids is working with families in regards to school attendance. And we have the promoting attendance in school success with St. Davids. And for children, um, age eleven and younger, um, with, with, the school could make a referral to St. Davids with three unexcused absences. So they make that, if the school makes that referral, St. Davids will voluntarily work with families who seem to be struggling kind of firsthand, like right away in the school year. So we can kind of address that firsthand. And otherwise then, kids that are missing seven unexcused absences, the school will continue to report to Scott County Child Protection. And then Scott County Child Protection will make a decision of whether or not that child is accepted for a child protection assessment or if that family is diverted to St. Davids. And St. Davids will work with that family in regards to attendance.
So Nikki, I just want to be, I just want to clarify. So looking at that top, that top path where the school refers a student from prevention services to St. Davids, we never even know who those kids are, right?
Correct.
Only the school holds that information?
Yes, in St. Davids. Yep.
Okay.
And, and Chris, could you just clarify in the top path, that's voluntary?
Yes.
But the bottom path is mandated?
Yes.
Just jump in and get into everybody's business here?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes. So the top, the top track is voluntary. And like just imagine if you're this family, like most parents want to be successful. They want to get their kids to school. And so it's really the difference between, um, waiting until things feel really bad and really your kid now has missed seven, um, unexcused absences. Like you have this chance to do something earlier and sooner. And you have somebody like a nice person from St. Davids who's coming to your door instead of a child protection worker. And we have, like, I'm going to tell you, we have the finest child protection staff anywhere. But it is still different. It is still child protection and it's still a totally different feel to that intervention. And so, um, if we can, if we can serve kids on that voluntary track first, that's great. If they go down through that, um, after seven unexcused, we can still divert them from a child protection referral. Um, and, and that is, Ron, would you say in the gray area? Would you say in the gray? It's a gray area of the law. But, um, we're going to share with you some of our results in just a minute.
Chris?
Yes.
Could you just explain thirty seconds what St. Davids is for those board members that might not know what that program is about?
Yes. So St. Davids is a nonprofit organization that serves children and families and has for decades. They have a very strong reputation across the metro. And they've been a very good partner for us. I don't know if you want to say more about that, Nikki, here?
Yeah, um, yes. So they, they really have a strong history of serving families and children in regards to setting up services, resources, and really helping families with behavior, identify behavior problems, parenting skills, all sorts of things that families may need.
And could I just add, that was a conscious decision of the board to pay St. Davids to be on hand for these students after three unexcused absences to try and not get into the court system. So I think sometimes we forget that, that that was, we're paying for it. If it doesn't work, we'll probably stop. We want to find what works to have less kids going through the court system, having that kind of trauma, you know, to intervene earlier.
Where are they located, Nikki? Where do they work at?
Minnetonka, I think.
Yes, they have an office in Minnetonka. Yeah, they also, I think, have an office.
Kind of research family resources.
Oh, yes. And they are located in Shakopee in our Family Resource Center for the families they serve here in, um, Scott County.
I think the other thing, just before we, before we leave the kids under twelve, when we look at that lower track, that mandated report where the school is mandated to make a referral to child protection, I was a child protection worker supervisor for about thirty years. And I can, I, I just want you to understand how that is just the wrong tool. Like they were not good at getting kids back to school. And, um, so trying something different, trying something, um, that might improve those outcomes was really part of the drive, I think, of the board to look, um, outside of child protection as well. So that's pretty exciting and we're going to share some results with you in a second. We have a parallel track for kids who are twelve and over. Those kids typically fall into a truancy realm. And again, it is three unexcused absences. The school can refer first to the Catalasso Group and then, which is a nonprofit, and then onto a second nonprofit. So I'm going to ask Nikki Conway, our Child Welfare Manager, to talk about that.
Thank you. So also just a little bit to zoom out, just a little bit more too. These are really innovative county responses. So I do want to be clear, I think I can say that because I'm pretty new here, so I can brag a little bit. I haven't worked here too long yet, but I've come from a different county system. And most counties just go directly to this child protection or, uh, county truancy. most counties just go directly to this child protection or county truancy route. And there's a lot of data around how that doesn't work, right? Like people have talked about specifically for truancy, there was a 10-year sort of longitudinal study in Ramsey County that showed that court intervention actually made school attendance worse. So it's just one of those things that I think it's important for people to note that this is really an innovative thing, like we're doing great things here in partnership already, and we're talking about doing better things, so that's exciting. So again, the preventative track, just like St. David's, is we're using Treehouse, which is a local nonprofit, this is a youth-based organization, right, there are branches across, I think, Carver and Scott County. Again, forgive me on the, on the total knowledge as being new. So the Catalasso Group is a group that does restorative mediation. So within the school system, as part of a school support plan, so that's a social worker or a counselor, a teacher might be starting to have issues with a child or there's, there's different things that are showing up in school, they can refer to this. They have trained mediators that will come into the schools in Shakopee and Prior Lake or also have an online option that can mediate some of those issues and kind of help the school system through those processes. They have the ability to do up to 500 referrals this year, so this is a new program this year, and they have the ability to, to really have a lot of capacity. If that doesn't work or in addition to that, they can also refer to Treehouse for mentoring and prevention services. Again, if those two, if those two things haven't worked and we get to seven excused absences or there's other things going on, then the school can report to the county, and we split the referrals between Scott County worker and truancy diversion program, so.
Okay. The last, okay, did I interrupt someone? The last piece of data that we looked at, and this is part of the data that we talked with our local state legislators with last week or two weeks ago, is the, the kids who are unenrolled or disenrolled after 15 consecutive absences, and those can be excused, those can be unexcused. And so Suzanne, I don't know if you wanted to say, or Nikki, you want to talk about that more?
Just to, just to outline briefly what the issue is.
Sure. So this is actually a financial statute where, again, if there are 15 unexcused or excused absences, a school district has to drop the child from enrollment. Our concern, I think our collective concern here is that sometimes we don't know where those young people end up, right? Sometimes they re-enroll in the same school, sometimes they re-enroll in another district, and I think we have some data to show this later. But it is, I think, on the districts to follow up with that, just on school records. But there aren't a lot of social work kind of responses to that sometimes. And so our, our, again, collective concern is we might not know where those students end up.
There's also, it's my understanding, Leslie, can you correct me if I'm wrong, but there's some obligation for schools to try to do some outreach to those students after they're dropped and those services are unfunded? Is that, do I have that right?
I'll let Mike respond to that, yes, but I do believe they have to continue to try to locate that student, and they're not receiving any funding for those efforts.
Yeah, that was, that was part of our discussion with, you know, Representative Baikberg, who kind of played both roles, legislator and middle school principal in this discussion. And it, it's one of those, yeah, most, most schools are going to go try to find out, hey, what happened, where are they at, how can we get them back in school? And we have some, you know, we have some legal responsibility if they're living within our school district to know whether or not they've enrolled somewhere else, so. And then we found, I mean, the interesting data when we looked at it, vast majority of our kids who are 15 day drops re-enroll in our district again, especially at the elementary and middle levels.
So we're going to look at some of that data in just one second.
Oh, yes. Those two programs, the PATH and the PAST?
Yes.
Are those available to all kids in Shakopee, just kids enrolled in the Shakopee Public School System?
All kids in Shakopee.
Okay. Is that a Scott County program or Shakopee Public School Program?
That's a county program.
Okay. Thanks.
Just a question, if I might. 15 excused absences being unenrolled, let's say they have mono, are you going to unenroll somebody that had, it says, that certainly would be an excused absence, but it says 15 must unenroll. That doesn't make sense.
Are we in a gray area?
Most of the time, if it's excused and we know where they're at, we're going to provide services at some point in that 15 days, even if it, you know, if somebody's ill, probably a homebound instruction or something, so. Yeah, it's just, that's the way the statute's written. I think the incidence of excused, you know, where all the absences are excused is a much lower part of that 15 day drop.
So if you start providing homebound education, that's, they're not really absent then?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the consecutive part, Commissioner.
Yeah, I get it, I get it.
Any other comments or questions about this? This is, these are county totals of our educational neglect assessments. So these are reports for the last four years that came into Scott County Child Protection. This is our, a number of our past referrals by district. So instead of waiting for seven, we've got three unexcused absences, and the school district refers directly to the nonprofit to try to prevent further, further challenges. So Shakopee made 46 referrals last school year. This is the diversion program. So as kids come through that system and instead of going to child protection, they are diverted to a nonprofit. And so nine students from Shakopee were referred to that program last year. And I think it's fair to say, Jim, I don't know if you would agree with this, I think you would, that in our conversations with your staff, they saw opportunities for kids to, that for more kids to be referred to these programs, that they weren't always caught at the right time to make these referrals, would you? Yeah, okay. Here's some early results. Nikki, do you want to talk about this?
Sure. I just do want to say too, like in the, in the previous two slides, I think it's really a pretty strong indicator, in my opinion, for that PATH program. You know, Shakopee made 46 referrals and had only nine referrals for diversion. So I think for us, that was a pretty strong indicator of that prevention program being pretty successful with families in Shakopee. This slide here, I think, is a little difficult to walk through because we do have a lot of students that were in the program that are unable to assess. We really just started measuring the school, the increase in school attendance and what that looks like for families. The unable to assess part is really about those families we received in April, mid-April to even late April, which really didn't give us a lot of time to assess in a month whether or not their school attendance really significantly increased or not. So I think this is kind of a work in progress for the beginning of this school year as well.
Thank you. Sure. Yeah. So for the PATH program, this is the truancy 12 and over. One thing to note is there was only a diversion program last school year, so those two prevention efforts from Treehouse and Catalasso are just new this school year and just starting out. So the data on PATH from last year is really just the diversion program. So you can see this broken out by which Scott, which family Scott County served versus Treehouse, so about 60-40 here. We had 104 truancy referrals last year, which was by far the most that we've had, so it's continued to climb over time, and we expect it to continue. I think another point to Nikki's point too is because these are new programs, they're going to take time to develop and really kind of show really the progress and measurements. And we are always still continuously looking at, like, what are the best things to measure? We obviously know that attendance is, is one thing, and there are many other indicators of well-being, kind of like Superintendent Redmond talked about, the MCA being one measure, there's a lot of other measures. So we're continuously kind of looking at what are those best things and having conversations about that.
You can do that next slide.
Yeah. So to that point, these are the, this is the attendance improvement county versus PATH, or county versus Treehouse for last school year.
And before, before we move on, I just wanted to acknowledge a challenge from our board, to think about measures of success for these kids who are struggling. That attendance is really important, we want these kids back in school, but are there other measures, are there other indicators of success? Because we also know that some kids get in the door and maybe even go to class and then don't do much because of a whole host of reasons. And so can we think about some other measures for success for those kids? All right, this is the county data. We do not have Shakopee-specific data here, but Suzanne Aronson was able to get this data from the data analyst at MDE. And so countywide, this looks at the total number of students who are unenrolled, how many re-enrolled in their same district, how many enrolled in a different district. And then, can you, the last year drop, do you have that info?
I'm going to talk to that too, yes. One thing to highlight here, Superintendent Redmond already talked about is for the younger kids, right, lots that were dropped were re-enrolled in the same school, that's not the same pattern for the older kids, right, nine through 12, this is really disproportionately affecting. That pink line of late year drop is really, if they're dropped super late in the year, it's hard to re-enroll within that time, so the data might be skewed a little bit to that point.
Thank you. And finally, this is the feedback from the stakeholder interviews that we did with the county staff and our staff, looking at what supports consistent attendance, what's already in place. And I think certainly the diversion and prevention programs we talked about, we were really impressed. We talked a lot after our meetings with our school partners about the creative things that are going on at Shakopee. There's even some, we were talking with one of the principals, and they, you know, they're pulling kids in for detention, and instead of just having that be dead space, they're doing skill building and a look at how your choices impact your next steps and like using that as constructive time and not just as a consequence or a punishment. I think the bottom section there, a huge strength in our school system is the presence of school-based mental health. I think we heard loud and clear from your staff that they could use more. Looking at last year, we served over 300 students, 4,000 sessions of mental health as individual and family sessions. And we added another school-based mental health therapist in the district this year.
So Chris, that 300 students and 4,000 is just Shakopee School District?
Correct.
Thank you.
In terms of gaps, there are some gaps internally monitoring attendance, which of course makes our data collection tricky. And there were some missed opportunities to refer to those prevention programs early. So we saw some enthusiasm from social workers and principals to maybe tighten that up a little bit. It was interesting, we had really kind of like painful conversations about like the lagging effects of COVID and how parents are just a little more likely to let their kids stay home, and maybe we have a different, a different importance that we place on in class learning. One of our commissioners asked at a budget meeting, I think we were talking about this, and they said, what do we know about the kids who are not going to school? And so in that last section, we queried our school partners about what are the, what are the things you hear, why are kids not going to school? And so some of those most common reasons for unexcused absences look at parent and child mental health issues, and even really some pretty heartbreaking stories about very, very young children in your district, just like in everybody else's district, but these really young kids who are coming in with really severe emotional behavioral issues. Family isolation, parent skills, lack supervision, homelessness, and just some cultural differences around not understanding the values of education. So with that, any, any comment or question about that?
I can just say that I serve on the Southwest Metro Board.
Yes.
And our biggest area of growth is the young, young children, elementary age, from a behavioral, mental health support.
Yeah.
That is where we're seeing some pain points in those programs, because there are so many students that need assistance in those areas.
Yes. And, and I think your faculty, your school representatives would say that started, they started to see that pattern before COVID, but that it's certainly, the pandemic certainly negatively impacted that.
Yep.
Thank you.
I have a quick question about attendance. I remember, you know, when I was working for Shakopee Schools, some students, they didn't want to go to school. Parents, they wanted to go to school, but they say, no, what they can do, parents, if they, for example, if I, if my memory is correct, it was like high school, sophomore, they say, no, I'm not going. What the parents can do.
It's a very, very tough, it's a very tough challenge, and what is true and what I think this team narrowed in on really quickly was every one of those situations is unique, and that whatever we create to respond to absenteeism has to be really flexible because why one student won't go to school and why another one aren't the same and what their families experience aren't the same. And so I think you identify a common element, parents just not knowing how to get their kids to school. And that's part of what Treehouse and the Catalasso Group work on with families in an effort to get those kids back in school. I think the school is also doing some pretty creative things to like change their culture and make school an inviting, welcoming place where everybody belongs. This is your school, this is your building, this is our community. And that goes a long way, I'm thinking, promoting attendance as well. All right, so our, our objective is that children will attend school consistently, engage in learning, parents will have enhanced capacity, just like you were saying, and they'll have enhanced capacity to adjust their child well-being and ensure consistent school attendance. So we have two strategies for this, and we're going to engage in a collaborative leadership team to drive proactive and innovative approaches. So quite honestly, as we sat down together, there were still so many questions about what do you guys do, what do we do, how do we weave that together better, how do we take what you do best and what we do best and make the biggest, the biggest impact? And so there are a number of tactics where we are going to meet together to exchange some expertise and, and try to work together to avoid those kids going into defense services. We asked the schools, and they agreed, to look at some efforts to engage students and families before referring to those enforcement, so like how do we maximize the use of these prevention and diversion programs? We want to develop some of those preventative outreach efforts together. We heard from your staff that they think the best way to connect with some of these families is not for a county person, but maybe for a nonprofit or maybe for a school person, if we had, if we could resource that, that we could look at some kind of a teamed approach to connect with families. It was really nice, I thought, the school staff talked about the teachers being the first point of contact, and how do we help support those teachers and help them build skills so that they're in the best position to respond to some of these things as well. And the last tactic is, is an idea that we are looking at here at Scott County as one of our innovation grants, and, and looking at some resources that we could share with the school to create, to create some funding or some positions to expand outreach. Suzanne, or Nikki, do you want to talk about that?
Sure. So this year, we had, I guess, insert sort of a challenge for county staff to think about whether or not there was some innovative ideas that could help students or kids and families in Scott County. One of those ideas was the possibility of a family support worker that works in the school, that can connect kids to their school and families to the school, but also connect them to the community, so that that individual would be able to help increase the relationship between schools and kids and families, but also connect those families to resources in the communities that might best help their family and their children.
So there was interest in that, there was a lot of questions about what would the focus be, what would the scope be, who would do it, what would it look like? And so it's an idea that I think we're really interested in, in talking about further, and it's not baked by any means yet. Yeah? Did you want to say anything about that one, Mike?
I'd agree with everything you said. I think one of the, one of the important components when we're looking at it, again, kind of, you know, still pretty new to the idea, but not, not to have somebody come in and do whatever the work is in isolation by themselves, but there are some pieces in that where you go, all right, they're, they're school personnel who have the closest relationship with the family, with the student, so how do you, how do you maximize that time of, you know, kind of the school district employee in terms of them being the ones who do the meetings with the families? But somebody could be the intermediary, kind of get things set up, access resources for the family, but also, you know, maybe, you know, set the time to meet up, get all that, kind of the details worked up, because that, that's really time intensive. And then, you know, maybe in partnership with, with school employees, do the actual meeting, so that we're... so that we're not losing touch because again, ultimately, we want, we want the kids in school. We want them back in school and want to, you know, want to continue and sustain that strong relationship. So it's not as, it's not as simple and straightforward as, hey, just come in and do all this and everything will be solved. It's how do we make a systemic improvement, you know, and kind of maximizing different resources, different capacities of those resources, different focuses, which I think is intriguing.
Thank you. The second strategy is really ensuring timely referrals to the existing prevention programs. And so that is really how do we help our school partners identify those, those kids who are at risk with the three unexcused absences? And how do we improve some of that data collection around that? And finally, this team will pull together. We felt like we needed a little deeper examination of those kids with the 15 consecutive day drops. And also to come together as a team to share some data and results and try to narrow down on some of the specifics of the data. Our team will be reconvening in February of 2024, which seems like it's not so far away, to take a look at what work is done and what we still need to do and what we still need to learn from each other. So I see it as a pretty, a pretty dynamic group of people coming together to work on this. So we'll, we'll take a look at where we are in February and report back.
Yes, just as it relates to data, right? We have two huge bureaucratic systems that are trying to work together. And that's difficult, right? It's difficult for one to work together, let alone two. But as it relates to data, right, there are hard numbers we can look at and we can't ignore those, but there are always, there are always the stories behind those numbers, right? And we've learned a few lessons even from the meetings that we've had around that. As it relates to 15-day drops, for example, we learned in some of these meetings that a lot of these young people with the school district, you actually know where they are, right? They're waiting to get into a day treatment program or they are connected to the services that they need that might be more deep end. So I just think it's important that when we look at the data, we can't ignore either side of that, right? We're looking at the hard numbers because those are going to show us the trends, but that we're also making sure that these are human people we're talking about and there are real stories behind it as well.
All right. That's it? That was a long road, wasn't it? How are we doing?
You're five minutes ahead of schedule.
You know, I work for you.
Thank you.
So with that, I'm wondering if you have any other comments or questions, any direction to our teams? Both, I would invite comments or questions, direction for the county staff. Mike, I'm guessing you're equally as interested for the school folks. We just really want your thoughts and we really want your support to do this work. I think we have a pretty energized group if we dig in. I think we can do some things.
I'll just start off and say I think this is outstanding work. We, it's a, it's a strong collaboration that I think as a result of working together with this type of a program is going to make us even better yet. And I think there's, if our schools can be successful, our businesses in our county will be successful, people will want to be here in Scott County. And this is to me, one step in the right direction to achieving the goals from an educational perspective as well as from a county perspective to help us thrive simultaneously, really. And so I'm really excited about this opportunity. I'm anxious to see as things progress, what we're finding and ways that we can become better and other ways maybe that we can collaborate to be better together because we know that it takes more than one. When we work together, we can achieve some great things. And I have no doubt that we can do that. And I'm appreciative of all of the work that's gone into this, from the county side, from the school side, everyone that's been involved in developing this plan. I'm appreciative of, of all of that effort, so thank you so much.
Well, thank you for your kind words. It's a humbling thing, actually, to be in these rooms with these people. And you're looking around and there are all these committed, smart people that all want the same thing. And it's just like, okay, let's just like, let's just corral that, corral that energy. So thank you for saying that.
And I hope this isn't the last time that we can meet as a joint boards to talk about these things and to continue to push forward to make us better.
Nice, thank you. Other thoughts, comments, questions? Any comments from this, oh, go ahead.
I would just say, it seems like there's a lot of, from, you know, what the Saks person said, a little bit of prevention helps with a lot of the cure with this stuff. You know, if we could get ahead of some of this stuff, you'll save all of us a lot of time and money in the long run, so.
Yeah. I guess I just want to thank Shakopee School District for being willing to go on this journey with us because of course, we're trying some things out. We want to do this and we are doing some of these things in all schools in our county, and we're going to get there. But we're, it's kind of experimental right now, you know? We're experimenting and thank you for being willing to do that. It could have been easy for us as a county, for you as a school to say, no, you know, whatever. If the kid's gone seven times, then we'll tell you and they're your problem. Otherwise, dad, our business, we'll stay out of yours. I think it's, healthy families is all of our business. So thanks for being willing to work on that with us.
Commissioner Brackey, we would say right back at you. We appreciate having collaborative partners because we're way better together. And we don't, we don't all own, neither of us owns all the parts of the challenge and we, you know, hopefully together we own most of the solutions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Madam Chair.
I don't think I do. We need a priest or? I think we're.
Are we at 7.2? Is that what you're referring to?
7-2, yeah. We want to, it's actually going to be somebody who's much better at sharing information than either Jim or I, Tiffany Olson, who's our Director of Communications and Strategic Development. Just to share, just kind of an overview of district partnerships. And again, as they're getting set up, I mean, Scott County is an amazing, you know, partner as the Academy Champion and we want to continue to build a stronger community together. And if the Vikings continue to do well, we might all just have to stay right here.
Actually, let's go home so we get a better draft. Although after Detroit.
They're at 7-0, I think midway through the second. I just Googled.
It's first and goal for the Vikings.
We just not to talk about it.
Glad everyone's been watching or listening to this today.
That'd be great.
What we don't do doesn't affect things.
Tiffany, this is what, 59 minutes, is that what you said?
Uh, 62.
You increased it since the last time.
Perfect.
I will be intentionally brief. It's great to see everybody here and hear all the conversation. Really, the only, or not the only, the reason we wanted to add this to the conversation today is partnerships is such a strong part of everything that we're, we're talking about today and obviously between the county and the school district. That's really one important part. And then we also have partnerships that we wanted to make sure for everyone in this room that you were aware that our district is building. So again, I'll be intentionally brief on this, but happy to take any questions. And hopefully you can learn a little bit more about the partnerships that we have in our district. Dr. Redman already talked about our compelling vision. And really, when it comes to our partnerships, I won't go in depth here, but students are at the center and we're looking at those partnerships that can help amplify our compelling vision. And we will just say, the county, Shakopee, our greater district, we have some amazing partners. And they're not all just, you know, ginormous huge companies. We have mom and pops that are doing things, we have global companies. We have every different facet being covered, from construction and trades to military opportunities to four-year colleges above and beyond doctorate level. Our school and community and your packets that you received today, I'm sure many of you are already aware of some of the stats, but there's a couple highlights in there just to kind of level set to of the magnitude of what we're talking about in terms of the great diversity of our student body to just the sheer numbers that we have from high school being almost at that 3,000 mark. And then obviously, when we have our elementary students, we've talked about Pearson Early Learning Center and our Saber Cubs, as we like to call them. And then also just our staff members, we're the third largest employer, as you're aware. And then also, we have 1,000-plus staff members that actually come from 85-plus, and I say that because it's growing, different communities as well. So again, when we're looking at partnerships, obviously, we want our staff to represent our student body, but we also want our partners to represent where our students are interested or may not realize that they will be interested in the future. So this is just a quick graphic, the Shakopee Chamber. I feel very blessed to be on the board there because the conversations, every single board meeting, every single month, Shakopee Schools, our community and our students comes up. So that is very integral to everything that we're doing and that is also seen with the businesses that are either members or soon to be members of the board. And then obviously, you can see here the student wellness and successful learning outcomes really are a tribute to everyone at Scott County, the district, and we are very appreciative of that. If you were not aware, the Shakopee Foundation, it was not founded this year. It was actually founded a few years ago, but kind of, what do they call it? Reimagined itself, I think is the word that sometimes likes to get used. And they are a formal convening organization. And that is a foundation that is managed by Shakopee Chamber as a formal nonprofit, but it actually goes directly back into the academies of Shakopee at Shakopee High School. So that benefit and alignment is listed here, but it is obviously focused on keeping that economic and workforce development opportunities here and local. And it basically serves as a foundation outlet for businesses, personal donations, anything of that nature to be able to have our convening organization connect with our school and define opportunities that can support our students, whether it's making sure an opportunity is equitable from a transportation standpoint, scholarships, kits that we can do to prepare school, students for what they do in post-secondary. And it's just really the foundation helps create a strong sense of community and purpose that we weren't sure if you were all aware, that this is out there. And we do not market or communicate, fundraise, anything of that nature that is managed by the foundation. But again, the proceeds go directly to support the academies of Shakopee. You've heard us mention that quite frequently. This is our somewhat brag slide, but out of the pride that our students bring to the model, not what we have. We are only one of two high schools, if you weren't aware, in the States that has a true wall-to-wall academy model. And those small learning communities, really, the, the only way that those truly work is through the support of our business partners because of those real-world, authentic experiences. So we have gone out, we actually just renewed and also signed some new agreements with Academy Champions. Scott County and the city of Shakopee are joint Academy Champions for the Human Services Academy. I think there's fun little stickers if you want to represent in your folders there. But we also have many other members and there's a grid on here. You can click the link at a later time. But to be an Academy Champion, it's definitely not just to get a shiny trophy or something of that nature. It's really not a monetary donation piece. It's basically saying you're going to commit your time, your talent, and everything that you have to help support our students. So we're very grateful that the county and city have joined forces to do that. And we wanted to make sure that this group knew that there's a lot of other companies here locally that, you know, we really have a great opportunity in our backyard to be able to provide experiences just as the county has and the city has. So what you see on the screen there, we actually have two new partners on there. We have Valley Fair, which if you liked Mr. Pulicky doing the roller coaster, we're trying to do a little branding there, that's the ninth grade Academy Champion. We also have Bear, which helped really get our engineering and manufacturing equipment up to par before they were even a champion. And there's others that are listed on here. SMSC has done amazing things for our school community and specifically for arts and communication as well. But again, want to make sure you're all aware of the presence within our school community for that. And this is just a quick snapshot of last year. There was roughly 155 academy partners, and we're just talking the high school, nine through 12. We have many more partners. You'll see in some of the infographics in your folders across the entire district. We also have volunteers that are doing various things, but over 155 business partners, including those champions, donating from a monetary perspective or value-based, 1.3-plus million dollars. And also, you can see those volunteer hours. So whether it's helping inspecting one of those cabins that we saw, other items of that nature, that's where those hours come from. And this is again, just another snapshot of other partnerships that we have, whether it's a celebrate reading event. HART has done a ton for our families in need. There's a voucher program that we're able to provide through social workers and counselors for those that are in need where they can go and participate once every six months to get basic items that are new. But if they are in need and that is at no cost to them. And we also are able to get supplies and items for our teachers in classrooms, either at a nominal fee or discounted entirely. Other partnerships are listed on there. And also even things like Children's Hospital. We became the first district in the state of Minnesota, first public school district to be a HART SAFE certified school, which basically means that we're able to respond to a sudden cardiac arrest. And that's through a direct partnership prior to this past year with the community on putting AEDs in our facilities. And then also Children's Hospital being able to provide the necessary training and procedures. So many other items on here, and again, this isn't meant to be bragging rights by any means. This is really meant to show, you know, we have the, it takes a village. Here's all the groups that are together. Our summer learning adventure programs, which are, you know, quote-unquote, summer school, but they really are fun programs. Those are made possible because in certain programs, each week, we're having folks come in and bring those real-world experiences and helping with the reading and the math and the writing, social skills, things of that nature. And then obviously, from PTOs to alumni association to various others. This really is a great county, great community. And everything that we do, we're actually hosting, I want to say, it's 75 individuals. I want to say 20 school districts, if I'm doing marketing math. It's usually the safe way to say above or below 20 tomorrow, actually, at the high school for the Second Annual Student School Board Event. And we thank Chair Peterson for providing Shakopee, suggesting it as a place to host this event. But basically, great individuals like Michelle and Aditya and their peers across the state are going to be convening at our high school to talk about student voice and the impact that they can have in governance and, and school boards across the state. So we could talk for hours on this. I know that at 8:15, that's probably not what you want me to do. And I went through this very quickly, but happy to answer any questions. And again, the goal is just to provide a brief snapshot of all the great partnerships that help aid in the learning and everything that we've talked about today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming, the school board, the commissioners, everyone in the audience. We've come to the end of our business, so Madam Chair, do you want to close yours?
I'd ask for an adjournment for the Shakopee Public Schools joint meeting, regular business meeting tonight with Scott County.
Oh, a second.
We have a motion.
I'll make a motion. Motion.
Second by Mohammed. Any further questions, comments? Seeing that all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Foes? Motion carries. We are adjourned.
Okay, Scott County Board, is there a motion to close our meeting? I'll give the motion in a second, thank you. In discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.